The Calamasa City Council on Monday, May twentieth at six P. M. Ms. Benson, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Savante?
Here.
Councilmember Mammon?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Potem- Hewitt?
Here.
Mayor Davis?
I'm here. And then we have city manager Cobol. City Attorney Barrow, Deputy City Clerk Benson, Finance Director Reed, Planning Director Lucia, Public Works Director Monson, welcome here. City Engineer Thornton, Fire Chief O'Connell, and Captain Peterson is not here. We have the high-dollar people out here, Mr. Ankle, taking care of us tonight. Being that that's been said, and you're the short straw, you get to lead us in pledge allegiance. Oh, before I open this up for communications from the public, I would like to honor somebody that has passed away, and they were instrumental in being on different councils, working with the city governments, working with the supervisors, working with Royal Lisa. You know, Art Welch, he passed away on the seventeenth, and I'd like to sort of give it a moment of silence, and then we'll move on. He will be missed. Thank you. Communications from the public. Richard Frost?
I live in Ucaipa, but I spend more-
I'm holding against you.
I spend more time in Calamasa. And I've noticed something, that there's different groups that are, I don't know if they have licenses or not, that are venting around major places, like here and in Ucaipa, too. Like this weekend, somebody set up a food stand across from Rosie's Restaurant, I guess after they closed, and kind of hoping to siphon off some people that from that, you know, some customers from that place. And then about a year ago, I was in Ucaipa, and someone, they set up a table at a busy time in front of the Cedar Brothers on Ucaipa Boulevard, and they were selling cookies to people coming out of the store. They sold quite a few cookies. But you see it around, they're taking advantage of this license. You know, if they don't have a license, you don't know if it's safe anyway, so.
I don't know how they get away from the Health Department, to tell you the truth, but that's another world.
Yeah.
You know, I was surprised to see them in somebody's parking lot this last weekend. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, that's it for communications from the public. And we'll go on to approval of the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances. Anybody got anything going? Can I get a motion?
I apologize, my mic is off. I'll move to approve the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full readings of ordinances.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That is, anybody opposed? That means nobody, so it's five, six. Mr. Tony, you want to come up and speak?
Thank you, council. Just a short report from the Calamasa Chamber this month. Our breakfast meeting was last week. We had Christopher McCarrion from McCarrion Law Group. He shared the importance of small businesses being involved in the community, and he has quite a story. If you haven't had a chance to hear him speak, from his military background to becoming a lawyer and a JAG with the Army and an interrogator, speaks seven languages.
Really?
Amazing, amazing fellow. Good story. This coming week, or this coming month, on June eleventh, at Cafe Royale, we'll have Terry Knight from the Well Outreach Center. She'll be our guest speaker. And coming up, I just want to touch on the fact that the annual scholarship tea is this Thursday at the Everdeen Museum. It's in the afternoon. Scholarship opportunities are available, or sponsorship opportunities are still available. Tickets are thirty dollars a person, if you'd like to attend. All proceeds go to the Calamasa Chamber Foundation. As you know, our chamber got its 501(c)(3), so we can go after more grants and funding for the scholarships. You know, I've shared with it every time, you know, I'd love to give out, get to the point where we're giving away a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, multiple recipients. This year, we have nine recipients. And so, I formally invite the council and the city to join, to enjoy an afternoon tea of food and recognizing the scholarships that we're handing out to local students. We're having a guest speaker who was a previous scholarship award winner, who is back in the community as a businessperson, and she will be sharing at the scholarship tea her experiences through college and into what she's doing now. Our welcome bag program, oh, and I also want to thank the city of Calamasa and Mayor Davis for sponsoring the event with us, for the tea. Our welcome bag program is in full swing. We have successfully delivered now over sixty welcome bags to the new Calamasa residents this year. And this past month, we've had one new member join the club. We've had eight membership renewals, with two members upgrading to our new member plus status. So we're at a total of one hundred and thirty-six members now.
Very good.
Any questions?
What time does that start?
I think it's at two o'clock in the afternoon.
Okay.
That's what I understand. I saw something at four, but I'm, you know, gotta go to the website and look, because I got confused on it. I'm supposed to speak there, too. So, but yeah, just a-
No, I will be there.
Lot of stuff going on. I'm doing a lot with the Lions Club right now, being the president, and, you know, looking to take-
You know what happens to people that volunteer, don't you?
Yeah.
They get overworked and confused.
And confused, yeah, for one event or another. Yeah. If I don't put it on my calendar, I don't-
I know all about it, yeah.
Anything else, guys? Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Got to go home, get my dogs out of the pen. Julie's up in Los Osos with the grandkids, so thank you so much.
You bet. Okay, business items. Item number thirteen?
Yes, sir. This item will be presented by Yesa Benson.
Okay, I'm going to try to not stumble all over my words here. Just a tad bit nervous. So, good evening, council. The Parks, Trails, and Community Service Commission recognize the importance of celebrating citizens and groups who have made a significant impact and contributions to the commission, or, I'm sorry, to the community. This commission has worked diligently over the last year and a half to prepare the framework and guidelines for the Citizens Recognition Award Project that is presented to you in your agenda packet tonight. Commission Chair Alicia Aponte is here with me tonight, and she's going to be able to provide you a little bit more background on it and help answer questions.
Is it a green light?
There's a green light.
You got it.
There we are. Okay. So, over the past year, year and a half, Commissioner Reeves felt it was really important to come up with a citizen recognition program to recognize those who have been instrumental in community service and dedication to the city. We worked out a framework. Jenny looked at four different cities to come up with a draft. We ran it by Ucaipa's recognition program as well, to see how they did things, and took a little bit from that as well. It went through city attorney, I believe, city manager as well, to kind of provide feedback. So this is what we came up with. We're looking at three different awards. The first would be Golden Heart Award for exceptional youth and for service to the community, peers, or their school. It would be for youth who have overcome significant challenges in their personal lives and have demonstrated exceptional resilience, courage, and determination in facing and triumphing over adversity. So it would be to service to the city, dedication, that one we called the Golden Heart Award. The next, and if you have any questions, stop me and let me know. The next was for Community Enrichment Award. So this could be an individual, a business, or 501(c)(3) organization who've demonstrated an unwavering commitment to promoting civil rights, civil engagement, and fostering positive human relations within the vibrant and diverse community of the city of Calamasa. So, to improve the quality of life for people. This one, we discussed and decided that this one may be awarded posthumously as well. So, people who were instrumental but aren't any longer with us, they can be nominated for this award as well. The last one was re-titled Legacy of Service Award for demonstrating exceptional dedication and commitment to serving their community in a specific area, be it the arts, education, health, or through major projects that bring tangible benefits to the city of Calamasa. It would honor those who have gone above and beyond exemplifying the qualities of leadership, selflessness, reliability, and active involvement in various community and recreational activities. So those were the three basic awards that we came up with. There are eligibility requirements listed in the packet that you have. If you would like me to go through them, I will. Otherwise, you can take a look at them. Basically, anyone can be nominated. The nomination would be done through either online or Yesa, they could also turn in something, right? They can be nominated in person or online. It would be, excuse me, let me throw something on the ground and then look at this paper. Okay, so nominations would open to the public from August to October yearly. It could be submitted by anyone on the website, as long as they meet the eligibility criteria. We discussed and came up with the idea that it should be two Parks and Trails commissioners and one city council member. That way, there's not a quorum, and it can be done outside of an official, I guess, Brown Act meeting, right? The nominees would go through a process after nominated, being nominated and the eligibility process, excuse me. Then the council member and two commissioners would basically pull from the applications which ones they thought met the criteria for the award. And when awarded, they would basically be honored by a place, a plaque, and being, how do I want to say this? It makes sense, like a plaque hung somewhere, or a memorial, monument, thank you, built that would recognize the recipients of these awards. We discussed possibly having, like, the news mirror recognize them as well, possibly invite a congressman or senator's office to do a presentation for them as well, if that's something they were interested in doing. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Why not?
I just think it's a fabulous idea. We have a lot of new people that live here. I think it's an opportunity for people to maybe get involved, and maybe for future commission positions. But it's always wonderful to recognize people who give of their time and commitment to a city in favor of other people. So I think that's a fantastic thing the committee is doing. Great, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I thank you.
Great, great, thank you.
Howard, do you want to give something?
My name is Howard Reeves. I live at ten seventeen Douglas Street in Calamasa. I want to thank the ladies here behind me. There's two commission members not here tonight. One couldn't be here, and I don't know what the other one is doing. But it's been a long time that I've been involved with, working with different commissions, and finally, this commission put together something that's before the city council. And, you know, after living here for fifty-seven years, Calamasa, we've been a city for thirty-three years, and we're losing our history. And I know Jackie Davis, Bill's wife, is working diligently on the Calamasa Historical Society, putting together stuff that goes back to the eighteen forties and eighteen fifties, when a stagecoach stopped right out here where Singleton Road and the freeway meet. And that stagecoach went from San Francisco all the way to the east, and it stopped here in Calamasa. And that's, history's getting away from us if we don't do something about it. And I strongly agree with all the stuff that, in that language you have there, with the youth award and the second award. But when you get to that third award, that, to me, is a very important award. And most of you know that I've already been a recipient of that award over in Ucaipa. And to me, that is important, that Calamasa follow the same blueprint, and doing something like Ucaipa has done, which we have all that information, the staff has it, okay, to where these people that give their lifetime, I'm talking about a lifetime achievement award, and I can name myself three people that should deserve that over the next few years for their lifetime achievement. And all three of them are already passed on, and that's a shame, okay? And I know where to put it, where to represent these people with a plaque and their picture and their language and stuff there, that's important. But I know we may not have anything right now, but something will come along where we find someplace to recognize these people, so the public can see that, okay? And so we have the blueprint to do that. Let's don't let it slip away. And giving a recipient an award that they take home, they're the only one that's going to see it the rest of their life. The public will never see it. And we need to capture the history of what people have done for this community. So I strongly recommend that the council work on a plan to do something to where, that they put together something of that nature. And I'd like to just read an item here. "To enshrine in the form of a permanent portrait the name and picture of those individuals who have exerted a distinctive, positive influence of unique dimensions by their contribution to the development of the community, they will be framed and no larger than sixteen by twenty inches in size, and will bear the name and a brief description, statement of the individual's contribution to the community. The name and statement will be engraved on a gold plaque not to exceed the size of three by five, the font to be no smaller than twelve font, number twelve font. All portraits will be on display at a location determined by the city council." And over there, they call it the Wall of Fame Award. You can call it whatever you want here. The budget for that is not to exceed five hundred dollars, approved by the council. Now, when I got my award over there, we, as a family, we had to go get my picture taken at my expense. The city didn't have to pay for that. All they had to pay was to mount it and what have you. And it's over there. There's seven of them over there right now for people to go look at that been, that Ucaipa has honored for a lot of work in Ucaipa. Let's don't let the people in Calamasa slip through our fingers, because we don't want to step up to the plate and do something, because the cost is very small. And if you only do one a year, how could we not afford that? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any questions on this? Okay, could I get a consensus of accepting this, and we'll file it? Is that about right?
I think we have to point.
Yeah.
They want somebody to-
Yeah, the second part is that we want one of the council members to serve on the selection committee as well.
Do we have to make that decision at this time?
We don't have to make the decision at this time, but I think we want to make it soon. I think the application period's going to start soon, so we want to probably, we could probably do it at next meeting if you want.
Yeah.
So if you want to, okay.
We'll see who likes to volunteer.
I just have, you know, a question. I wasn't sure if we were going to decide that now, but as far as the, overall, I like all the work that was, I think they did some good work on it. My only question as far as just the timing of it and when it would be presented, I'm not sure if all that stuff, you've already worked through the dates and the timing, if it's already set the way that you're looking at, but will we align it with something like State of the City or some of these other annual awards? Or I wasn't sure what the thoughts on that were.
We kicked around a couple ideas. So traditionally, council does like celebrations for commissioners at the second meeting in December. So we talked about awarding those, those citizens that way, or potentially at the Christmas tree lighting. But that's still kind of pending, so I'm working around.
Yeah, based on the way the schedule's laid out, it would be, it would be kind of the end of the year type of award timing. So probably not for State of the City, because that takes place in September. But certainly, if we want to, if we want to adjust that in the future, we certainly can. Okay.
Okay, I'd like you guys to think about it. Who would be interested in sitting on that group, and we'll talk about the next meeting. And with that, we'll move right along.
So, Mayor, was there a motion to accept staff's recommendation?
I'll make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Don't. Five, zip. Okay, item fourteen, urgency ordinance. Will?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Catalytic converter theft has been one of the fastest-growing crimes in the country, with State Farm Insurance reporting a four-hundred percent increase nationwide since 2019. Thieves are on the rise because of the increasing value of the precious metals contained within catalytic converters, and the ease at which criminals can remove the devices from vehicles. Currently, the city's law enforcement cannot seize a catalytic converter found to be removed from a vehicle and in someone's possession unless a victim has been identified. An ordinance to provide law enforcement tools to combat catalytic converter theft was discussed at the April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four Public Safety Workshop, and the city council directed staff to bring forward an ordinance for the city council's consideration. The proposed ordinance adds a new chapter, nine point six zero, to the Calamasa municipal code. It is based on an ordinance that was adopted by the Riverside County Board of Supervisors on September twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Using the same operative language as the county ordinance, will make it easier for sheriff's deputies to enforce the ordinance in both unincorporated areas and in the city of Calamasa. The proposed ordinance makes it unlawful for any person to possess any catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle unless the person has a valid proof of ownership of the catalytic converter. The proposed ordinance also makes it unlawful to falsify or cause to be falsified any information in any documentation or other proof intended to show valid proof of ownership or possession of a catalytic converter. Violation of this ordinance will result in criminal penalties, primarily a misdemeanor, although the city retains its discretion to enforce the ordinance via other means, including the administrative citation process. The item is being presented as an urgency ordinance, meaning that the ordinance will go into effect immediately. The urgency ordinance will lapse once the regular ordinance is in effect, which will be thirty days after the second reading. And that completes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions we have.
Questions?
Sounds great.
Okay, we have a speaker, Darrell Terrell?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Darrell Terrell. I'm here, not speaking as a city or Marinvalle planning commissioner, but a Marinvalle resident. Since twenty-twenty-three, I've traveled from one end of the county to the other end, to city council chambers to another, to ask city councils like yours for the passage of the county's catalytic converter unlawful possession ordinance, or similar ones that makes it a crime to be in the possession of one or more unlawful dismantled converters. There has been recent legislative efforts to address these thefts. However, there is a loophole in the state law that allows a person to have up to eight detached catalytic converters without having an automotive dismantler permit. This is why, Your Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm here in support of the adoption of this proposed ordinance to close that loophole. In under this proposed ordinance, if a thief is found in possession of one unattached catalytic converter without a proof of ownership, it will allow your deputy to arrest that thief. That's why I call this proposed ordinance the one-and-you're-done ordinance, versus, in contrast to the state law, eight you escaped, is stronger than and more relevant than state law, in bridging the gap between state law and holding these thieves accountable for these, their crimes. And unlike state law, that does not penalize the mere possession of a catalytic converter. Also, it would allow your deputies to take enforcement actions regardless of a suspected thief is in possession of one or nine converters. In addition, the burden of proof does not require to prove that the converter was stolen. Simply to establish the possession of the converter is not a lawful possession, and that's all that's needed. Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have seen the unintended consequences of state law like this one, that has weakened our vehicle theft laws, costing our families, who heavily rely on their vehicles for work, school, and other daily activities, money that could have gone to pay their bills. That has taken, and it also has taken an emotional toll on your residents, leaving them terrified and violated, and like to, also to incentivize crime and everything else. And that's why we have to stand firm and to allow other cities, like your city, to hold these thieves accountable. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. If there's nothing else to be discussed, we can go ahead and get a motion. Do you want to do one at a time?
One at a time? Okay, yeah, I can take that. Okay, I'll move to adopt urgency ordinance number four zero three dash U relating to the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? That's five, zero, and then now number two.
Before we go to number two, a little shorthand of the title we need to, the council needs to read the entire title. John can do, or I can do, or Will can do?
Yeah, let me get, let me get to a different page, or-
I've got Andy, if you want.
Why don't you just, Quinn do it, and we'll just.
Okay, Quinn, go for it.
Ordinance Number 403-U, an urgency ordinance of the City of Calamasa regarding the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter and declaring the urgency and immediate effectiveness thereof pursuant to Government Code Sections 36934 and 36937, and finding that the ordinance is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. So move.
I'll second.
And all in favor again?
Aye.
Okay, now number two.
No, we didn't.
It's on page 136.
Yeah, so if there's a motion to adopt ordinance Number 403, I'll read the title. And actually, it's a motion to introduce.
Yeah, we have a motion to introduce it.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll read the title.
Aye.
Ordinance Number 403, an ordinance of the City of Calamasa regarding the unlawful possession of a catalytic converter and finding that the ordinance is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. This will come on, now that you've adopted, you've introduced this, this will be on your next consent calendar. So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zip. Now, council meetings and all the other good stuff. John, you got anything to say?
No, Mayor. I did not attend any regular meetings, and I don't have anything further.
Sounds good to me. Mr. Shalos.
I also didn't have any regional or county meetings, so.
You guys are really boring today.
Man.
You guys need more work.
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes, I had one meeting that I attended on May 8. That was a Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting. It was held in Coachella Valley. And importance of that meeting, they had their first open session on their federal, their budget, and it'll close in June. And also, draft ACA-1 compliant ordinance and expenditure plan discussion. This was, the commission was looking for input from the commissioners on the draft. It gives bonding authority and not a vote for bond, so that's real important. That's not happening there. So other than that, it was a good meeting, but it was in Coachella Valley. Thank you.
Okay.
Actually, and this kind of applies to all of us, they, there was a lot of discussion on meetings, splitting up meetings, other than the normal meeting places, which are in Riverside County. People in the desert have to drive a long way to come to those meetings. Some of those meetings are only an hour, which means they have to drive two hours to come to a one-hour meeting, and they drive two hours back. So a lot of discussion, then nothing decided upon, but it's being discussed at all.
I drive up to Shaver Lake for a one-hour meeting and then come back. You know, that's only, what, 300 miles?
So the gist of the discussion was, most of the commissioners felt, when you go to a commission meeting, a county meeting, of the different entities, that the audience has a right to see you work.
Yeah.
And so that was the thrust of the discussion. Some are looking at the convenience of not having to drive, but then you're cheating the public out of, instead of looking at you on a screen, hearing you in person. So there's a lot of discussion, but nothing was decided.
Okay, sorry, I was just being sarcastic. It's, Wendy?
Well, I opted for a Zoom meeting for a 20-minute meeting. I didn't go to the Riverside.
I don't blame you.
For Tump. I was at a Tump meeting, and they approved the 2024 Pass Zone Five-Year Transportation Improvement Program. And we've got three big projects that are going to be funded, and I'm super excited. Cherry Valley, Singleton, and County Line.
County Line.
So, we're good.
Okay, thank you. It's, you know, and all I've got is your safety tips. Please slow down and pay attention to what's going on on the highway. And if you, in a rural, not even rural, let's say, I know some of the houses behind me would, would have it. I mean, I've, I've seen trails of big snakes, and I've only seen two rattlesnakes so far, but usually gopher snakes aren't that big in diameter, and racers are definitely not, and rosy boas aren't, and kingsnakes. I mean, I've seen things as big as my arm that's going across the roads, you know, so be careful. You know, it's, and there are programs, if you have animals, that, I think it's in Norco as far as a school for making your, your dogs aware of rattlesnakes. And it, I've, in the whole time that I've been here, I've only had one horse bit by a rattlesnake. And luckily, we caught it quick enough to put straws in her nose so it could breathe, you know, but, because usually they'll get it on the snout. And, but, you know, it's, be careful out there. We've been doing a lot of weed eating on my place, and so we've had a lot of opportunity to see snakes. So, okay, Will, you got something to say?
I do, thank you. Couple of announcements. I recorded a new podcast episode and uploaded it this last Friday, giving an update on Oak Valley Town Center. My goal is to produce more frequent and shorter episodes. I think the part of my challenge I had was, those longer episodes, they take longer to edit, they take longer to produce, and time is, time is very precious. So doing shorter ones, I think, will be more productive, even if they're more frequent, but I think that'll also be more timely as well for the public. So doing that. If you want to subscribe to the podcast, go to cityofcalamasa.net, scroll down to the bottom, there's a link for the City Manager Podcast there. And then speaking of our website, Assembly Bill 1637 requires all government agencies to use a .gov domain or a .ca.gov domain no later than January 1, 2029. So we've got some time, but we've gotten ahead of the curve, and we've secured calamasa.gov. So now, if you tried to go to that today, it won't work, but it, we have, we do possess it now. And so we're in the process of putting together a schedule to roll that out. So there'll be some impacts, like on your devices, like your phones, where you get your email. Well, you may have to go in and set, you know, re-enter your, your Zoom name and password when that happens, but we'll put those instructions out, and we'll let the public know when calamasa.gov will be active. But the old URL will continue to work, so there will be a transition period. There'll be plenty of time for people to, to adjust to that. But I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that that's, that's coming. And finally, I've got some really, really good news. Late last week, Congressman Ken Calvert has included a request for $5 million in community project funding, which is just the fancy word for earmarks, for the Singleton Road Interchange Project. Congressman Calvert is a very high-ranking member of Congress, so, you know, if he, if our request is in there, the only, probably the only way that it doesn't get included in the final congressional, or the federal budget, is if, basically, earmarks go away. I don't see that happening, especially in an election year, so our chances are very, very high of getting that funding. And when you combine that with the additional funding that was approved today in the Tump Pass Zone budget, we will have all the funds secured to complete the missing on-and-off ramps and the realignment of Calamasa Boulevard, which is a huge accomplishment for us, because, you know, that had been long pegged to be developer-funded, and as I talked about in the podcast about Oak Valley Town Center, that is just not possible anymore. So being able to secure all the funding for that project is a huge, huge success for our city. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
I want to applaud that. That's great.
And for all of you that are out there in, in television land and everything else, and the people in here, Will's podcast is very informative. If you have any questions, especially this one, as far as what's taking place, you know, southwest of the freeway and with the dirt work and town center, you know, and it's, it does answer all the questions, and it's very informative. And if you get a chance, listen to it. Okay, Mr. Baller?
Thank you, Mayor. I hope this works better this time. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6, the city council will now go into closed session to have a conference with its labor negotiator.
And with that, we're going to move to the, the secret room.
The room where it happens.